All right. Trenton City Council Meeting Tuesday, May 7th, 5:30 PM. This meeting is now being called to order. Let us please stand for the flag salute. Aye. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, pursuant to public laws 1975, Chapter 231. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times, posted on the first-floor bulletin board in City Hall, and filed in the city clerk's office. Formal action will be taken. Mr. Garcia?
Certainly. Roll call. Councilwoman Edwards?
Present.
Vice President Figueroa Katzenberg? Councilwoman Frisbee?
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Presente.
Councilman Harrison? Councilwoman Williams?
Present y presente.
Gracias. Council President Feliciano?
Present.
Myself, Brandon Garcia, municipal clerk, present. Mr. Koloji? And Mr. Wesley Bridges?
Oh, me too.
Thank you. On your call, Madam President?
Proceed with the invocation, please.
Certainly. Almighty God, who holds the fate of man and nation, we most humbly beseech thee to bless this, our city, these deliberations, and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and thy greater glory. Amen.
Amen.
And Madam President, it's my understanding that we have a proceeding to take place at this time. If there's nothing else, I'll go ahead and read that proceeding from the agenda.
Go ahead.
As listed, it is a resolution authorizing the removal process for Cherie Garrett, a member of the City of Trenton Housing Authority.
Thank you. At this time, council will now hold a hearing on the issue of whether THA, Trenton Housing Authority, member Cherie Garrett should be removed from office for misconduct. Ms. Garrett received a copy of the charges in this matter and timely notice of this hearing in accordance with state law. We will begin now, if she is present, with a brief statement or testimony by Ms. Cordelia Staten. Yeah, give me a minute.
Forgive me, Ms. Staten. I just want to make sure of a couple of housekeeping items. Madam President, or to the solicitor's door, just so I know, is there any limit in time for testimony this evening? Understood. I defer to the council president.
So out of respect for Ms. Staten, and as it is she who brought it forward, we'll respectfully go at five minutes, depending on how many other people there are, then we will make adjustments as need be. But as for Ms. Staten and for Ms. Garrett, should she choose to speak, they will each get five minutes each to speak. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Staten, sorry.
My name is Cordelia Staten. Thank you for your time. I'm a newly appointed commissioner to Trenton Housing Authority, and it's one of, it's something that I looked forward to doing, serving on that, on, serving on the authority because of all the great things that they are doing here in the city. I had my first meeting on March, in March, and the behavior in March alarmed me somewhat. I sit next to Ms. Garrett, and she just seemed to be very combative at that particular meeting. Nothing particular. Everybody, I guess, thought it was normal, but it wasn't normal. There were outbursts. There was no regard for meeting protocols. She wasn't recognized. She wouldn't allow the chair to recognize her to have the floor. She would overspeak speakers. And a few times, you know, she would make disparaging remarks about the commissioners as well as the administration. My second meeting was in April. At this April meeting, it was pretty much the same. When Mrs. Garrett, she came in, she was, in my opinion, combative. You know, she would, how can I explain? She was combative. It got to a point where there was a particular item on the floor, and it had been answered and answered over and over again by the administration, her questions. And finally, knowing the rules of, rules of order, I called for a, I called for the chairman to call the question so we could move on with the agenda. And so, and so that happened. So after that happened, of course, it was approved by the body, and we were able to have the question called. Well, she was, she let me know. First she questioned, she says, "You shouldn't even be on this board. You don't know nothing." What? I couldn't believe it. And then she went on to say, "Oh, I know how you got it. Oh, how'd you get on this board? Oh, I know how you got on it." I mean, this was unprovoked. It was, it was out of line. She had been out of line the entire meeting. She had referenced one of the people saying they weren't a good mama, or "You ain't my mama," and just, you'd have to see the tape. If you haven't seen it, I would ask you to see the tape. And not just particularly from April. You can go all the way back. Because this kind, this behavior is not becoming a public official. And I've been one long enough to be able to kind of tell what's good and what's bad. But this was not good, and it was not normal. And it's not just me. It is all of the commissioners who have suffered through this, through this kind, this mistreatment, this abuse, this disrespect monthly. And it just needs to come to an end. Is there any questions for me? Oh, let me, let me finish off on that. So when the meeting was over, you know, there were some more words. And Ms. Garrett chose to leave early, so she left. That was fine, without incident. And then I came out to leave as well. Well, she approached me from between two parked cars. She come up, she's hollering, "I got something to say to you." Well, we wasn't having that. And so the person who was escorting me, I told me to just go on and get in the car because at, at that point, she was, to us, we perceived her as a threat. That just can't be. That just can't be. You know, all these boards are volunteer, and everybody that comes on these boards, you know, they take, they give up their time and their talent to help move the city forward. But Ms. Garrett is not doing that, in my opinion, with the Housing Authority. She has just been, I don't consider her an asset, and I really believe that it is time for her to come to an end. Her tenure to come to an end. She's not serving the city well. She is not living up to your expectations as an appointee to the Trenton Housing Authority. That's all I have.
Any council members have any questions for Ms. Staten? Okay. Yes, council?
So I don't have any questions, Ms. Staten, but I do just want to apologize that you were subjected to what you are. You and any other members of the Trenton Housing Authority, no one deserves to be disrespected at any time, especially in a voluntary position. We thank you for being on the board. We thank you and all the other commissioners that are on the board, and we appreciate you for bringing this to our attention. I have been to some of the meetings. I have witnessed it, so I know exactly what you are referring to. But I thank you for coming forward and also sending a letter as well. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before I read a statement that was sent in to be read into the minutes, is there anyone else that was present outside of Ms. Garrett? Is there anyone else that was present at the meeting that would like to speak at this time and offer testimony? You can come forward.
Good evening, council members. My name is David Ponton. My address is 861 Breville Avenue here in the city of Trenton. I was asked by Cordelia to compare her up from the meeting that day. I sat in the lobby and waited for her to finish with the meeting. Ms. Garrett did walk by me, went out the door. And when Cordelia came, I grabbed her bag and started walking out. And you ladies know me, that I do protect the women that surround me. The women that I love, I protect them. So we got halfway to my car, which was parked on the other side. And all I could hear was these threatening words coming from a woman. When I turned around, it was Cherie Garrett. DeeDee said, "Dave, come on, let's just get in the car." I opened the door, opened the door for her, put her in the car, put the bag in the car. She was still yelling and screaming and cursing at Cordelia. I got in the car and pulled off. I didn't think that was very kosher or respectful, and I do believe that she need to be removed out of the safety of Cordelia and the other members of the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. At this time, I'll read a letter that was received from the chair. They were, they asked that this be read into the record tonight. Dear council members, the six undersigned Trenton Housing Authority commissioners are writing to you after a recent April 11, 2024, letter sent to you by our colleague, also on this letter, THA Commissioner Cordelia Staten. We will not repeat the allegations contained in Commissioner Staten's letter as we trust that you are familiar with the contents of that letter and the specific information contained therein regarding the behavior of THA Commissioner Cherie Garrett. Unfortunately, the behavior exhibited by Commissioner Garrett as described by Commissioner Staten is not limited to that one meeting. To the contrary, during her entire tenure as a commissioner, Commissioner Garrett has resorted to similar behavior during meetings directed at fellow commissioners, the executive director and his staff, as well as other professionals. Her conduct is characterized by ineffective, abusive language and unwarranted and unfounded allegations claiming malfeasance, misfeasance, and/or intimidating corrupt practices. Most of this behavior can be verified by viewing recordings of Trenton Housing Authority meetings from the time Commissioner Garrett was appointed. For her entire term, Commissioner Garrett has used the commission meetings as a platform to direct insulting and demeaning behavior towards all of these individuals. As you are aware, the commissioners are appointed by either the council, mayor, or state of New Jersey and serve without compensation. They are dedicated to the mission of the Trenton Housing Authority and work hard with the administration to deliver quality, safe, inhabitable housing for the many residents in the system. The allegations and innuendos repeatedly uttered by Commissioner Garrett against her fellow commissioners and members of the administrative team are divisive, slanderous, insulting, and totally unnecessary. This behavior also undermines the morale of the hard-working THA administration and staff. Examples of Commissioner Garrett's behavior can be excerpted in some recent communications between commissioners, administrative officials, and others. For example, in a November 7, 2023 email exchange between commissioners regarding a corrected agenda for the following day's meeting, Commissioner Garrett emails as follows, quote, "Why do we have two presentations for two-hour meeting? The main purpose for the meeting, the monthly meeting, is to review and investigate the THA administration's departmental reports and activities aligned with the state and federal statutes for implementation of policies and directives. If Gary Gentry bullies or obstructs commissioners' duties at tomorrow's meeting, he will be written up. Why does Simone Lopez have a THA email address?" In February 2024, an email from Commissioner Garrett to fellow Commissioner Simon Lopez, Commissioner Garrett states as follows, so after the email addressed the question, that was the end quote, now quote, "Mr. Lopez, I'm not going to further discuss your issues with you or anyone else of the board without Trenton City Council liaison, mayor's office, or someone from the governor's office and HUD regional administration. The Trenton Housing Authority Board of Commissioners lacks the legal accountability of its duties and governance. One of the major legal issues are that we have a board, we have board members who lack the experience and understanding of paid training to be on the THA board functioning in the capacity as commissioners. Mr. Lopez, you are one of the commissioners that lack in your understanding of your role as a THA commissioner. I'm not electing to be your psychologist or psychiatrist. Hire one." End quote. It should be noted that at no time has HUD or any other governing agency indicated that the current Board of Commissioners was insufficiently trained or lacked competence to address the numerous issues that come before it. Unfortunately, Commissioner Garrett also directed communications directly to HUD officials maligning the performance of the executive director and the competencies of her fellow board members. Again, no basis for these allegations was ever provided, and most importantly, no such evidence exists. Most recently, as demonstrated in the video of the April 10 Commissioner meeting, Commissioner Garrett, at approximately 53 minutes into the video, responding to Commissioner Staten's motion to call the question on the item, displayed her disagreement with the parliamentary motion by making personal attacks on Commissioner Staten and Commissioner Green. Specifically, Commissioner Garrett's comment directed to Commissioner Staten was, quote, "I don't know how you got on the board, but I do know how you got on the board." End quote. This caused all the other commissioners to react, including Commissioner Green, who remarked that Garrett's comments were disrespectful. Commissioner Garrett responded to Commissioner Green asserting, quote, "You ain't your own mama because you have no self-control." End quote. Garrett further chided Green for the late arrival to the meeting. Circumstances Green later explained was due to a death in the family and other events. As you can see, these small samples demonstrate a pattern of behavior that is abusive, creating a toxic environment, not conducive to that status of a commissioner appointed to the Trenton Housing Authority by the council. Again, reviewing applicable videos of other meetings dating back to Commissioner Garrett's appointment displayed the same behavior over and over. It is time for that behavior to stop. The only way for the behavior to stop is to remove Cherie Garrett from her appointed position and/or to decline her reappointment. If City Council decides to initiate the removal process, the remaining THA commissioners and staff are available to provide supporting documentation, video evidence, and personal testimony. At a minimum, the six other commissioners of the Trenton Housing Authority respectfully request that City Council decline the reappointment of Commissioner Garrett to another term at the conclusion of her current term, which expires in June 2024. Thank you for your consideration. Very yours truly, and it is signed by Darlene Weldon Gordon, Chairperson, Gary Gentry, Vice Chairperson, Tanzania Green, Simon Lopez, John Rains, and Cordelia Staten. It was CC'd to Mayor Reed Gussiora. At this time, if Ms. Garrett would like to come forward and make a statement, we invite you to the podium.
Hello, City Council. Council President and the other council supporting staff. Thank you for having the opportunity for me to stand here and talk before you. If I, if my conduct was anything like you just read, you're right, I don't need to be on the board. It's a bunch of junk. I, and my contribution is to follow the policies of HUD and to represent the city as an appointed official. I was appointed by the City Council. I did submit the video to you. Did any of you see it?
Yes.
Okay. So this is exaggerated. The only person on that board has been taking what they, the description of the behavior is me. So I don't conduct myself like that. I did, though not charge, I don't, I do my homework. I do my due diligence. The other six, I can't say what they do and don't do, but from my, what me being on there for two years, they're not reading material, they're not doing their due diligence. They have an issue with me looking over the material. We're only there once a month to provide oversight and monitoring. I don't really think that they really understand that that's what the position is for. Yes, it's not a, it's not a paid position, but I take it very, very seriously because we advocate for those residents. I have residents here. I have been attacked, followed out of the building, cussed out by the same person who wrote that letter to you. Okay? I have a gentleman here where the residents and guests went completely off on that board about the behavior of at least four of the board members who were appointed by the House, by the council. Okay? About their behavior. The residents have stated that they, the conduct of the board and how the stuff that they said in there, is they took what their behavior and reflected on me to make it seem like that I'm this monster or this boogey person. Cordelia Stanton, I said what I said to her, yes, but I was, I didn't attack her or abuse her. I don't do that. It's no need to. I'm not an angry person. Far as me, after the meeting, I was coming out with my food. They always feed you after the meeting. She said in the meeting, if you seen the video, she says she has, she made, she made the statement as she put in her letter that I attacked her at the meeting. I didn't attack her. I may have made a statement, but it wasn't in a manner that she's describing it as. If that's how she took it, that, I can't control that. All I said to her, as I was exiting the building, right behind her, because she was in an irate position, I just said to her, "I just wanted to say you kind of misrepresented yourself upstairs." That's all I said in regards to someone that you say came at you the way you described upstairs. You remember you were a city deputy clerk? Because that played out in the newspapers. She said I was crazy, and I just told her she was being a A. And I went to my car. I didn't yell at her. I wasn't irate or anything. I just went to my car like I was going into my car. That's it. So I don't know really what, and you can look at some of those. It's up on YouTube. The issue also is that the minutes. So when we're going over stuff at City Council, they're not putting the information, the stuff that we're covering, in the minutes because it protects the board. It allows you to, to be able to look at the progress, and how we are monitoring oversight of that board. They are putting stuff in there, and that's why I went to the HUD Regional Office because they're leaving us out there that we can be liable sued. So they're just putting in the minutes like, Commissioner Garrett asked a question, and the Mr. Garrett answered it. That's not minutes. It's nothing in the minutes. You can't, the minutes is to protect the board, to show that we are providing the oversight and the...
Leave that as your time allotted.
Oh, that's why that gets cut off?
Yes, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. But I just, just want to end it like this. It's not true. But if you, if that is your privilege, is your, is you are, is your authority to remove me, but it's on you, but it's not true. I don't, I don't come at anyone like that, and I'm not, I don't function. What, what they put in here?
Thank you, Ms. Garrett.
You. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to remove Ms. Garrett as a member of the Trenton Housing Authority.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Garcia? Okay, so we're moving the resolution on the agenda. We can do it now, can't we?
And that vote is being taken now, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Katzenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Mr. Garcia?
Certainly.
Thank you.
With your call, Madam President, that brings us to the point of public comment. If we could have the public comment clipboard, please. And just so every, all members of the public know, public comment also is five minutes long. You may address any item that you wish, and the council is not obligated to respond. Madam President, it appears we have 12, 13, 14, 15 individuals listed. I'll take that as well. Thank you.
So Mr. Garcia, we're going to amend the time to three minutes each.
Is that a motion that I hear?
Yes.
Second.
Is there a second? I'm sorry. So it's moved by the council president, second by?
Frisbee.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
To reduce public comment to three minutes per person. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's the motion on the floor. That being said, roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Katzenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Public comment will be reduced to three minutes at this time. The first person that we have for public comment is Amin Abdullah.
He made a lot of silent shots.
Okay.
Moving right along.
Thank you.
Laura Mora, is that Leif? Is that correct? All right.
Good evening. My name is Laura Liel. I live in 528 Gladstone Avenue, Trenton. The single members of the council, City Council. This afternoon, I came to give my support in the, on the ordinance proposed 2440 by Councilwoman Yasminelli Gonzalez. During my work with the Spanish-speaking community, so, taught me that of the many needs that our Latino community have, needs between finding work, food, rent, pay bills, services, et cetera, et cetera, and the big barrier to learning the English language. But there are not places that teach on weekends in our community to study that language. We know Mercy Community College and other organizations have free ESL, but the space always limited. There are some people that charge a starting amount for English classes. However, our immigrant either have food on their tables or a study. Having information of the services provided by different departments of the city hall in the Spanish will give the Spanish-speaking community the opportunity not to be swindled for not understanding the language. Many of our immigrants that do not speak English use office services in Trenton where they charge for giving information or fill out some forms. With the experience that I have working in Trenton, I say many people are afraid to visit the city hall for information because language. That is very frustrating for a humble and working community which is slowly adjusting to the city. You have no idea of the tests calls I receive from people asking for services information because the English language is a barrier. I respectfully request that you consider the ordinance 2440 and give your affirmative vote. Thank you so much. Have a blessed evening.
Waldemar Ronquillo.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Waldemar Ronquillo. I'm with the activists for a long time in the city of Trenton. And I'm here to just to ask you to consider 2440. We need it in the city. Why we need it? Because we have a lot of new arrivals. And like Laura would say, a lot of people, when they need to fill out the form, they're charging between $40, $60 to fill out application. Even for work applications, they're charging these people. So if you consider, put this in both languages so it can people understand, especially when it comes to the city hall. Some people don't understand English, and they calling me. I said, "How can I fill out the paperwork?" And I just come up tonight, "Could you please consider to put this 2440 passage tonight? I really appreciate it. Thank you so much."
Sam Kanek? Sam Koenig.
Good evening, council. My name is Sam Koenig. I'm standing here today as well to support the ordinance 2440. Today, I stand as a strong advocate of the proposed ordinance 2440, requiring certain city documents to be translated into Spanish. Not just as a practical measure, but a essential step fostering inclusivity in our community where every voice is heard and valued. Currently work at the College of New Jersey for the Center for Community Engagement. I also work for Mercer County Community College and I'm on the Board of Trustees for the Trenton Air Soup Kitchen. And I frequently, if not every single day, encounter individuals who would truly benefit from this ordinance passing and it would improve the quality of life. So I offer something I wrote this morning. And it's a story. So Sonia Maria is a resident of Trenton for over a decade. Maria owns a small bakery in a popular, prominent Latino neighborhood where she started to support her family and serve her community. Maria's bakery is not only her source of livelihood, but it's also a gathering spot where locals enjoy her delicious pastries and warm company. Maria, like many in Trenton, predominantly speaks Spanish. Despite her success as a business owner, she faces significant challenges when trying to navigate city regulations, permits and compliance documents, all of which are in English. Each time she needs to renew her business permit, she makes changes or makes changes to her shop, the language barrier process is daunting and confusing. She often relies on her teenage daughter to translate or has to pay for professional services. Now imagine that the city has provided this service and the communication is now in Spanish. Maria receives the renewal notice and her business permits are both in English and Spanish. For the first time, she reads the document clearly in her native language. And she's able to understand the requirement and completes the process quickly and independently, feeling empowered and respected by her city. This change might seem small, but for Maria is transformative. She can now fully participate in the civic life of her community, make firm decisions about her business and engage in competency with city services. Maria's story is a small example of the hundreds of business owners and the thousands of Spanish residents, Spanish speaking residents around this city. So with this being said, I look forward for a favorable vote from the city council and that unanimously that you make history today. Thank you.
Juan Roland. Please just state your name and address for the record, sir.
Juan Roland, 1314 South Clinton Avenue.
Thank you.
Good evening, council president, vice president and council members, as well as everyone in attendance today. Before you tonight is a resolution for the city coronavirus fiasco recovery program. The Empowerment House submitted a proposal to provide direct assistance to justice impacted and/or Trenton residents. If council votes on our resolutions tonight, we will begin to launch our two-year program that includes financial literacy, anger management and relaxed prevention with a collaboration partnership with Mercer County Path Forward. We anticipate to assist over 200 residents with previous criminal records and/or individuals who reside in the city of Trenton who may just need some education on those areas. Because we believe in Empowerment House that prevention is one of the best cures. Also, you know, to also deliver in the language where people understand, which is one of the main focus tonight. You know, people that have either lived through that situation far as adversity and also now are dealing with resiliency. I would like to also acknowledge everyone in this room that I have played a part in our growth within the city of Trenton who are sitting in our areas today. And, you know, the signs of approving this resolution just shows how much of investment you guys are willing to invest in. And all we're asking is just 1% and we'll work for that 99. So I appreciate you guys for hearing us out. God bless.
Jackie, help me out with the last name starts with an L, Lesch. Just how I said this? Did I say that correctly? I was way off, huh?
Way off.
Okay.
Way off. It's my handwriting.
Got it.
Next time, put a computer up.
I'm gonna blame you, no worries.
Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Jacqueline Leon. Soy residente aquí de Trenton, New Jersey. Vivo en la 350 de South Broad Street. Quisiera poner para la resolución 2440 para que los documentos aquí en Trenton sean traducidos en el idioma español. ¿Me entendieron bien? I see some blank faces up there. Right. So you need a bit of translation, right, in order to understand what I just said. And so similarly, our residents here in Trenton need that same translation afforded to them, right? We have nearly 40% of Latinos here in Trenton. Our high school is at over 60% Latinos. And so we need to make sure that we are providing them the information to not only advocate for themselves, to empower themselves, but to be contributing members here in the city of Trenton. In December, a member of the city of Trenton came up to me. And not a story, this is a real life situation that a homeowner went through. And after countless visits to this city hall, to the taxation office trying to pay their tax bill, they were told repeatedly that they were going to lose their house. They were going to lose their house because there was a lien on it. And no one could explain to that person the process in order to pay off that lien and get back in good standing. All they were told is they were going to lose the house. The house was on the auction docket. And so that person approached me and I was able to call the office, have a conversation. I myself had to learn the process and understand it and then communicate it. That person had a money order in the office by the next day. So a simple translation of information, even if it's a one pager explaining the different steps, is a necessary component to any person living in Trenton. Again, we have a very growing Latino population. It's not a big ask at all. So we ask that you support resolution 2440. And I thank Councilwoman Jasmine Lee Gonzalez for even thinking of this because this is, this should just be commonplace. It shouldn't have to go for vote. It should just be a common practice. And the last thing I'll say is that any local agency that receives federal monies, which the city of Trenton does, is obligated to the requirements of civil rights law. And it is a civil rights law to have access to information and to receive translations on pertinent important documents. Thank you.
Kathleen Deal.
Good evening, council. My name is Kathleen Deal. I live at 19 Greenwood Avenue in Mill Hill. I pour love into this city. I love this city. And I've stood side by side by many people in this room to pour love into this city. I reject hate. And over the past few days, we've seen a lot of hate come towards the Mill Hill community. And I have yet to see any of the council members denounce the hate that came towards Mill Hill on Sunday. And I'm asking that you do that. The language and disparaging comments made against the Mill Hill residents are a smokescreen to make sure that nobody pays attention that compliance wasn't met with regards to zoning laws on a purchase of a house on Market Street in Mill Hill that is zoned as a single family residence. There are zoning laws on the books for a reason. People should comply with those rules. I have no problem with the purpose of the want of the building owner. I have a problem with non-compliance to the rules. And the statement of this developer is that they were given dispensation to not comply with the rules by a city official and by DCA. I am asking city council to investigate whether or not they were given dispensation to circumvent the zoning rules for their building on 412 Market Street. Thank you.
Frankie Williams.
How you doing? This is my first time talking. So my name is Frankie Williams. I came here from Brooklyn, New York when I was about five. I'm 42. I'm a female, born a female. When I came here, it was a lot of spiritual, spiritual abuse going on with a lot of demonic, demonic things going on, even in Trenton now. A lot of snakes, actually in human form. And I encountered that in 2020 and it made me look back on everything and where everything wasn't random events. Everything was really connected. I signed my, signed some money over to my caregiver, which was on my birth certificate when I was 18 because she was the only caregiver I knew. And that was the worst experience, period. So people in Trenton still think I must have this money. So they've been staging situations. They even like took my family hostage, basically, this group. So this was a few years ago, my little sister, she, she got raped outside the bar. I was underage. I shouldn't have been there, but she was way underage, like nine. So when I heard her voice, I didn't even think it was her. Till the next day, this group started mocking me from Stuyvesant to the section. They've been bullying me all my life since I've been here. And basically, I thought she was with her dad, but basically they had hold of her. These people switch kids at birth. These people will have somebody pregnant at the same time I'm pregnant and will switch that birth. They will tell you you're pregnant with a boy when you're really pregnant with a girl, all for inheritance money. And I saw that when I went to the hospital. So now these people have been creating situations. Whatever they do to me, they say I did to them. Then they're starting to try to put me into some fake initiation, into some type of cult like Illuminati. I went to the hospital for, for chest pain. And that's when they did surgery on something else. When I came out of there, I have sensors in my anal. This cult puts sensors in your anal to get full control over you. It's not funny, but it's true. And that's how they do a lot of people. And this is a very, very demonic cult that deals with snakes and they don't care. I was exposed in a sex trafficking ring like five years ago and that's when they started really targeting me heavily. I'm dealing with heavy identity theft and a lot of other things. I was looking forward to talking longer, but I couldn't cut what I had to say down in three minutes. And I don't want it to seem like I'm ranting. So thank you.
Elijah Dixon. Okay. Kristen, is that Brown? Okay. Austin Edwards.
Good evening, city council members and the esteemed members of our community. As you know, my name is Austin Edwards. I'm here representing the Trenton NAACP. And I stand before you today with a heart full of gratitude and appreciation on behalf of your decision to support the Crown Act. This stands not as a significant, just as a significant milestone. It's a testament to the commitment to equity, diversity and inclusivity within our beloved city of Trenton. For those who aren't aware, the Crown Act or the Create a Respectful and Open Workplace for Natural Hair Act is a crucial piece of legislation that seeks to combat discrimination based on natural hairstyles, particularly targeting the systemic bias against black individuals and other people of color. By prohibiting discrimination based on hairstyle and texture, this act not only protects individuals' right to self-expression, but also challenges deeply entrenched stereotypes and biases in our community. And I have to say, just for myself, I'm fully in support of the Crown Act because these locks right here, you know, listen, all right, these are works of art. By one of our own Trenton businesses in his image, Diane Bellamy. Now, as a representative of the Trenton NAACP, you know, we've long been at the forefront of the fight for civil rights and social justice. Since our inception over a century ago, we've been a beacon of hope and a catalyst for change, advocating for the rights of marginalized communities across the nation. And our mission rooted in the principles of equality and justice for all resonates deeply within the spirit of the Crown Act. And this is why I want to say thank you all for again supporting the Crown Act here in Trenton. I know it's on the docket today. And to further solidify our commitment to the Crown Act and hopefully you all will support us in this, we have a June 8 event that's happening here at Shiloh Baptist Church from 12 to 3 p.m. hosted by the Division of Civil Rights where they're specifically giving training on the Crown Act. A history of racial discrimination throughout New Jersey. The history of the Crown Act, how it's passed in over half of the states throughout the U.S. And for people like me, us lawyers out here, where you need some CLE credits, it also offers that as well. So it's going to be a great event. Thank you again for this and thank you for supporting the Crown Act.
Elmer Sandoval.
Good evening. My name is Elmer Sandoval, 129 Washington Street for a long time. And I'm here in support of 24, the ordinance 2440 from our councilwoman, Alarch Jasmine Lee Gonzalez. Thank you very much. Two things I'm going to say about this ordinance, it is very important to pass it on. Our community is, need this, every document to be translated. Because we've seen so many Latino speaking people come into city hall inquiring services. And a lot of times they have, they have problems because the documents is only in English. And believe it or not, there is organizations out there, they charge hundreds and thousands of dollars to translate documents for our people. That's pretty sad. And so that's why I'm here in support because I seen the pain of the people spending a lot of money. They don't have to, but they do because they need, they need to have services done. And also, I like to thank our councilman from East Ward, Mr. Harrison, for his support to Latino community. It is very, very supporting. And also, this, what I'm going to say is not a secret to anybody, but the Latino people in Trenton, that's the, that's the economic engine for the city of Trenton. As you know, Chambersburg, East Ward, is the only sector, thank you. Chambersburg is the only sector in Trenton that has a nightlife. If you want experience, you can walk on Hamilton Avenue, 8 o'clock at night, people walking from business to business. And this is how the Latino, Latino people is moving economy in the city of Trenton. So thank you very much, Councilwoman. Thank you for stand for our community, for the city of Trenton. And by this ordinance, city of Trenton will move forward. Thank you so much.
Edwin Benavides.
Hello, everyone. Just wanted to comment on ordinance twenty-four-forty. I wanted to thank you guys for moving forward with this.
Please state your name and address for the record, so I'm sorry.
Edwin Benavides, I work in the city of Trenton. I lived in the city of Trenton for twelve years. I still work in the city of Trenton. And going back to the previous presentation, Civil Rights Act Title VI actually forces anyone receiving a federal grant, federal money to make these documents in the language of the people that lives in that particular area, whether that may be Spanish or any other language in other places, Mandarin in other places. It's Hindu or other type of languages. In this case, it's Spanish. Not only does it forces the local governments to make the documents in Spanish, but also to train city workers on how to treat individuals that don't speak the language. Because it's been many cases in where I see Spanish-speaking individuals who come to the city hall and they don't know how to explain something, and the individual gets aggravated by this. We have to train city workers on how to treat individuals that don't speak the language. They may have their own biases, their own ideas, oh, they should learn English. They can have that, but those biases, those ideas have to stay at home. Because at the end of the day, these individuals contribute to our city. Simply, let's start with rent. Part of the rent goes to taxes, right? Property taxes. So, those property taxes help us pay for school, for the police, for the fire department. So, we benefit from those individuals. So, not only the documents to be in Spanish, but also for us to train, to provide training for individuals that work for the city. Again, that is the right thing to do, but it's also the legal thing to do. And I wanted to say thank you guys for coming up with this twenty-four-forty ordinance. Appreciate it.
George W. Daniels. All right.
Good evening. My name is George W. Daniels, born and raised in Birmingham, Alabama. I'm here today to support Ms. Garrett. Ms. Garrett is a commissioner at the Trenton Housing Authority. She worked, I'm not here to throw anybody under the bus. I'm not here to talk against anybody. I'm here to speak for Ms. Garrett. That's the only reason why I'm here. Oh, and for that gentleman that just was up here. What he just said makes a lot of sense, because my people have been trying to get that for four hundred years. But I just want to let him know, I'm down with him. But I'm going to speak for Ms. Garrett, because I think she was doing a wonderful job. Oh, by the way, I retired from Trenton Housing Authority, but I'm not here to talk about that. I'm here to support Ms. Garrett because of the work that she was doing with the tenants. She was working well with the tenants, having meetings, trying to do different things for them, trying to be so, helping with their social stuff, helping with their checks, medicine, and all that. I think she did a wonderful job. And so, I would like to see Ms. Garrett stay on the board of the Trenton Housing Authority. If Ms. Garrett don't stay on the board of the Trenton Housing Authority, then I'm going to begin to think that this is another public lynching for a Black woman in the city of Trenton, like we had with Ms. Ms. McBride. But we're not going to go into that. But what I would like to say is, I would like to know what is the plan for the city of Trenton, for West Trenton. I live in the West Trenton. Then I would like to know what the plan is for North Trenton. Then I would like to know what the plan is for South Trenton. And I would like to know what the plan is for East Trenton. Then I would like to know what is the overall plan that the city council have for the city of Trenton? Because when they ran for office, they told me all the problems that the city had and the plan that they had. So, I would like to know when they're going to implement this plan, so we can get the city moving down Broad Street. I would like to see the city prosper and grow. I was in the city in nineteen sixty-eight when they had the riot. I was here. I was out there with Reverend Woodson and the rest of them, trying to save the city. But I would really like to just let, I'm here, I'm not here to talk about that. I'm just here letting y'all know where I am. I'm here to support Ms. Garrett.
Darren Freedom Green.
Good evening, Council President, council members, and my primo, the clerk to the administration. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm also supporting the initiative for the language adjustment. I think it's only proper. We teach in the schools, two, three of us. And again, the dominant population is the Latino community. My point is simple and short. I'm not from the Latino community, but I'm for the Latino community. I think whenever we sit in this city, part of the sick history is we only stand when something happens to us. So, I'm hoping tonight we can get into a different space mentally and begin to understand when anything has happened to any of us is happening to all of us. I think that language barrier is damaging. It makes us think and keeps biases goings. And it's only important for this city to reach out. I would say we need to start considering something to do with the North Trenton population. There's a rich Polish community out there that nobody talks to. I think there's a Haitian community in East Trenton that would like to be a part of what the city is doing. So, I'm just saying, whenever we start to look at what this city needs, I think a comprehensive conversation needs to be had. Again, I'll close the night saying I apologize to Mill Hill for all the language that's been used in that direction. But I think what's not being talked about is how we got here. Nineteen seventy-one, President Richard Nixon declared the war on drugs. And it allowed for a war to be on Black communities. And what you're looking at now is the residue of addictions and convictions. My brother Juan does amazing work with returning citizens. And we seem to look at them as if they're abnormal or something else, or when they come home. I teach in five prisons. And I spoke at Northern State last week. And eight of the people I were talking to will be home within the next sixty days. So, when people pay their debt to society and they do what they're supposed to do, where are they supposed to come home to? And then what life are they supposed to live? And I would just say, when we talk about the hate that's put into the atmosphere, be careful about the hate we put on returning citizens. Because they are returning citizens, meaning they have rights, responsibilities, and they're human beings who deserve a right at a second life that they've earned through doing what they need to be doing. I'll close simply by saying this. Hebrews thirteen and three says, "Remember those who are in prison as if you're in prison. And remember the pain and hurt that the world has given them like it impacts you." When people are hurting anywhere, all of us should be concerned about it. And if we're not treating every individual in this city like they are somebody and they're God's greatest blessing, then I think all of us need to do a moral adjustment of what going on. God bless you.
Madam President, that is all the public comment that I have this evening. If, and you may start with whomever you like for public civic comment.
Thank you. Councilwoman Williams.
Respectfully, Council President, I'm gathering my thoughts. May I ask respectfully to hold my comment towards the end, ma'am.
Councilwoman Edwards.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. It's great to see you all here today. Buenos noches. Let's see. We are Black, eh, Capri, him, and, yes, Paquita. Yes. You understood that. Right. I'll start off on that note. All jokes aside, I think it's very important to have everything translated into Spanish. Our Latino community is growing vastly in America, especially in New Jersey, especially with the Texas governor shipping everyone here. We've received over a hundred buses, if I'm not mistaken, of refugees from all over the Latin community. So, it's important for us. The language barrier divides our communities, and we should be living in harmony. It is true that our education system consists over sixty percent of Spanish-speaking students. So, it's important for them to have access to translated documents and information, as well as the parents, too. A lot of the times, the students are helping their parents translate things. And if the student doesn't, if the child does not understand what's going on, it's hard for them to be able to translate that. So, we need to make sure we are ahead of that. I work for Congress for a living. Years ago, we had every document translated. Everything that we put out is translated into Spanish. All of our forms are in Spanish and available in English. And we have the capability of translating them to other languages as needed. And I think that it is important, especially for our local governments, to do the same. Mental Health Awareness Month. As you can see, most, all of us are wearing green on the dais. And that is because of Mental Health Awareness Month. And on that note, I want to speak to all of the gun violence that we're seeing recently in our community. A lot of those issues, underlying issues, are mental health issues. And it's important for people to be aware of that, and I hope that people seek the services that they need. And those of us that are in the community with boots on the ground, I hope that, you know, as you're out there in the community, that you're talking to people and getting them to get the help that they need. And lastly, I want to speak to the transitional home that's coming forth in Mill Hill. It's a touchy subject. I was, I received an email, I'm sure all of my colleagues have as well, from multiple people with concerns of a transitional home or a halfway house opening in Mill Hill. And as we are made aware, it is zone for a single family. All of that to the side. I think transitional homes are good for our community. I think that people returning back to Trenton, Trentonians, returning back to Trenton should have access to transitional homes so that they can re-enter society and feel a part of the neighborhood. It's a part of their mental rehabilitation as they're returning back to the community from prison. And, but with that being said, there's a way to go about doing that. I don't think that it's fair to force that on a community without their knowledge beforehand. I think that this organization that is opening this business or this transitional home should have actively participated in the community. In Mill Hill Society, they host monthly meetings. And the organization should have spoken to them about it, to at least get everyone on the same page. Reassurances needs to be had, because there is a stigma on people returning from prison. There is a perception that they could be violent. Your safety could be jeopardized, whether that be physically or theft or any type of vandalism or violence, you know? And that's only fair for them to be made aware that this would be happening. So, with that being said, I did get with late last night that there were remarks made over the weekend. And I won't speak to who said that, because I haven't yet talked to that person. But I do want to publicly denounce the racist remarks, because this is not about race. This is not about race. This is about safety and comfortability of the community. This is about the rehabilitation of returning citizens. And there's a way to go about doing that. And not everything is about race. It's just about proper protocols and respect, number one. And on that note, I hope you all have a great evening.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Good evening, and thank you, Madam President. I'm going to start where we actually began, which was with my Latino brothers and sisters who are here regarding ordinance twenty-four-forty. I want to first say good evening, buenas noches to all of you. Y estoy feliz de votar que sí para that. Just like Jackie came up and said, and I appreciate that, because that gives a hard reality of those of us who, when you are into a room and everybody's speaking a language that is different from what you are speaking, it is difficult. And if you have to catch some every so often, what I just said was, I am happy to vote for that ordinance. For those who didn't understand when I spoke in Spanish. So, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the way you delivered it, and I appreciate everyone who came out and supported. And I'm very excited for, to support my councilwoman at large, Yasmalet Gonzalez. I applaud you for actually bringing this to our attention. Next, I did want to address, and Austin Edwards from the NAACP, he did leave. I want to commend Council President for the Crown Act that she brought to the table. I like wearing my hair natural. Nobody should determine how I wear my hair or how you wear your hair. I think that it is, I won't say the word I really want to say, but it is challenging, challenging for me to even think that someone had, thinks that they have the right, the gall to tell you how you can wear your hair. That blows me away. So, the fact that we actually need to write this is just upsetting to me beyond words. But I'm glad, and I can't wait to vote for that as well. When it comes to those in Mill Hill, yes, I believe everything ought to be done in decency and decency and in order. I do also want to say, I live next to, just a door to over, for someone who is a returning citizen. I don't want anybody, and just like Mr. Green said, there is a stigma when folks come back that they're violent, they're this and they're that. Some of those folks are my brothers, some of those are my sisters, some of those are my cousins, aunts, and uncles. We have got, if you have paid your dues, you've paid your dues. And everyone deserves a chance to get their lives together. The family that lives next to me, and actually, we have three of them, all of them. Juan, I appreciate the work that you're doing in the community. Every single one of them has a right to live. Every single right, one of them has a right to build their family. Yes, I believe everything should be done in decency and order. I'm a rules follower. I will cross every T and dot every I, and if not, then I'm going to back it up and get it right. But I ask that everyone would digress. Everybody simmer down, and everybody give everyone a chance. And just like you want an opportunity to have a do-over, give everybody else a chance to do it over. There's a great book that I read every single day. And in it, it says, "He who has about sin cast the first stone." Every single one of us has got something in our closet that we don't want somebody to unearth. Every single last one of us. There's not one perfect person in here. The only one I know I've walked on water, and I don't mean ice water. So, with that said, I believe in everybody having a second chance. I believe that we should all, in every, I'm a West Ward representative. I have several homes in my community, and we embrace and we help one another. And that's what I believe that we should do, is to help one another. Help us to get it right, but definitely help one another. With that, I'm going to close with the city of Trenton, part of the city of Trenton's mission statement, which is to recognize the people of Trenton have made us guardians of the public trust. We are committed to govern with integrity and fiscal responsibility, to seek excellence in the city's operations, and to serve all the city's people with respect and compassion. I wish everybody a good evening. I thank everyone who came up here to speak this evening, even those who came out from the Orchard House and then chose not to. We are excited about you over there, Elijah, the work that you're doing in this community. And I wish everyone will get in safely. Thank all of our directors and all those who come out from a community. We thank you for coming out. And don't just come out when you got something like this to say. Come on out here and hear what the rest is going on in your community. Thank you, and good night.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. First, I'm going to just start off with saying, I'm going to send my prayers out to all of the families who have been affected by the gun violence that we just occurred over the last week or two. As we know, we had an elder who was also struck by some gunfire, and so my prayers go out to her. Thankfully, she is okay. Apologies to Ms. Cordelia Stanton and all who were subject to any of this type of behavior, especially people who are volunteering their time on different organizations and boards. I served on several boards, and I couldn't imagine going through some of the behavior that I've witnessed. I am actually the liaison for the Trenton Housing Authority, and although I have not And although I have not physically been at a meeting because they're held during the school day and during the mornings and I'm at school, however, I couldn't imagine being subject to it. I watched most of the videos and this has been an ongoing thing for those who serve on that board. So apologies to those who had to deal with that type of behavior. I also want to thank our council president for the Crown Act that she put forward. I share the same sentiments as my colleagues. I also want to say to Empowerment House, I think it's well deserved. You know, I'm very proud of Juan. Juan and I grew up together from Lamberton Street. And so I'm proud to see all the work that you have done in the City of Trenton. And I'm looking forward to supporting that. The Mill Hill, my council colleague Edwards and of course Darren Freedom Green said it, hit it right on the nose and Councilwoman Frisbee, we don't promote hate. And I don't, I have no idea what happened on Sunday. We don't promote that. That is, everyone knows how much I love everyone, even those who have done me wrong. But I do want to see us follow the zoning regulations. Yes, we do agree with that. I don't think anyone should have, there shouldn't be any, any favors being done. However, as stated before, our returning citizens are citizens. And they are coming home and they deserve to live wherever they choose to live. But we do want to follow the correct regulations. As far as the people who came out, thank you, everyone who came in support of twenty-four forty. Just a quick backstory, I have about three more minutes. I was going to run for office back in 2017. I decided not to at that time. And the reason why I decided to run this time, besides all of the chaos that we saw on the previous council, besides our councilman Harrison here. But with all of the chaos that was going on, you know, we were all tired of some of the things that our city being at a standstill. But it wasn't until one incident where one of our previous council members told someone from City Hall that he needed to learn how to speak English. And when I heard that comment from a council member, an elected official, that is what made me want to step up and say, we had no representation on City Council that was representing the Latino community in a respectful way, defending our Latino community. And so that was the reason why I decided to run for office. That was the deciding factor. Let me just say that. That was a deciding factor. And it was because of that, that, you know, my mother speaks, has broken English to this day. And certain things that she has to get in the mail that I have to translate for her. And just to hear all of the stories throughout the community meetings that I'm hearing, there are teenagers and little kids who are trying to translate documents for their, for their parents. And so sometimes that gets lost in translation. These are people that are paying taxes here. This is revenue that we can be bringing into the city, but they don't understand the documents that they're signing. So it is a state law. And I would love to see us branch this out and actually extend this translation to other languages. We have a Polish community, as we said, we have about thirty percent who are Haitian. So we could, we would love to see the Creole language also in this document, also in the future. But I'm thankful for most of my colleagues. I think all of my colleagues are in support of this. And I'm looking forward to us moving this one forward and finding out how we can make this work for the City of Trenton. And, and it won't be every single document, but most documents that are vital to the City of Trenton, which needs to be translated. So thank you for everyone who came out to support. Just know that I am listening as I'm in these council, in these community meetings. And I'm trying to make sure that our voices are heard as well. And just a quick thank you to all of the organizations who did some events over the last two weeks. We had April twenty-seventh, there were several events that went on. So shout out to everyone who did that, especially the Color Run for Autism. That was a huge success. And I got to shout that out because my kids are autistic that I teach every day. Thank you to everyone who had a part in honoring Coach Rob in the North Ward Little League batting cage. That was beautiful. It was very well deserved and very fitting for Coach Rob. So thank you to all of those who were there. But I also want to touch on something as far as us. We're getting ready to get into our budget soon and I-
Councilwoman.
I have Council President. I'm hoping that we can find the funding, provide some more funding for our education because we all know that the foundation starts with our kids and we need to pour in more funding into the Board of Education. I never use up my five minutes. So thank you all for being here tonight.
Councilman Harrison.
First, I would like to start off by saying how, how, I can't believe that Ms. Staten and other board members had to deal with this. I was dealing with this the last four years in City Council. And we don't need to see that. We do not need that chaos. We do not need people who do not know how to work with each other. It was a shame to hear from multiple people how these meetings were going about. It's not what, how we should be doing and it's not how we should be acting as a city. Also regarding the Crown Act that the council president introduced, I will wholeheartedly be supporting that. I think it's a wonderful ideal. Regarding twenty-four dash zero forty, I think that's another wonderful ideal. We should be having documents in English and Spanish. Regarding Empowerment House, I know the wonderful work that they do in the community. Thank you for all you do. Again, like my colleague had said before, I think it was a safety issue. I don't think it's about a race issue in Mill Hill. The community should always, the community should always be addressed about what we're doing in their community. Secondly, I'd like to thank all the people that came out to the community cleanup on Saturday, it was a summer cleanup, nine AM to eleven, to one PM over on Greenwood Avenue at the Briggs Library. We had a lot of people come out, helped cleaning up the community, which was a wonderful day. And also, I wanted to get Ms. Richards to speak about the, remember about the Unity Park regarding the plan proposal for soccer in the park. If you would speak on that. Thank, thank you.
Good evening, Council President. May I address the question? Well, regarding the Unity Park soccer facilities that we are planning, we are hoping that we are going to be able to do one soccer field and one footso. We will begin with the footso. And for that, we have already secured the funding. And Thursday or Friday last week, we went there with two contractors to see, to talk about the asphalt that we need to lay out prior to building the footso. Basically, the footso courts come as a one-piece and they just get installed on top of the asphalt. So that should not be varying and covering in, in terms of time. For the other part of the facility, the full soccer field, we completed environmental studies and we completed topographic surveys. So the funding is secure for that as well. But now we are just in the process of working on the specifications for the court. After that, you will see it here once we get potential vendors, contractors to do the work. That should be the next phase.
What's the, what's the timeline for when you think the field could be?
The footso court should be completed by the end of the summer. And then the specifications should be, also be completed by the end of the summer. I am expecting to put an RFP out around September, the end of September. And I hope, I hope that we will be able to award a contract at the end of the year so that we can start construction in spring twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, because you and me, and I think a lot of people in this room, know that the Chambersburg community is wholeheartedly supporting the wonderful job that Jose does with soccer. And kind of like Wally does with, when we do the community cleanups, his staff comes out there. I know you and your staff want to see soccer become evident in that park. Unity Park is played soccer every day, all day. So I, I'm glad to hear that we're, we have a timeline and we're going to be moving forward.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Before I get to Councilwoman Williams, Councilwoman Frisbee has something else she wanted to say real quick. Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to step, actually, well, I want to say that I wanted to thank Council President for putting twenty-four dash one eighty-six ordinance and for the Clerk Appreciation. That was excellent for this week. But also, some folks are not aware that it is also Teacher Appreciation Week. And we have two teachers up here on our dais. Council President, Priscilla Feliciano, and Councilwoman at Large, Yasmeille Gonzalez. So we want to thank you publicly. Having them taking care, knowing that our children are in their hands is a blessing. And the last thing I wanted to say, since I had thirty seconds left, on next Tuesday, which is May fourteenth, please come out. I have my West Ward conversations on Heritage Avenue at the old police station. Thank you so much. Thank you for my time.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Council President. So I have several things to say. I'll try to be as efficient as possible. First, of course, just want to say how great it was Saturday morning to be at North Trenton Youth Baseball for the unveiling of the mural for Coach Rob and for all the festivities that happened. It was a beautiful event, beautiful symbol of how important Trenton is for our youth and how important our youth are for Trenton. And as I said there, the stone that was Rob, Coach Rob, just, he created so many ripples in so many adults and children around the city. And we're thankful for what he was able to do. Also, I wanted to stick in North Ward for a second. On May fifteenth at five thirty, Galley Baptist Church, we will be holding our North Ward City Police Advisory Council meeting. So everyone is welcome. You don't have to be in the North Ward, but please join us. It's a great conversation between the citizens and the police department. And this coming month, we're going to have Anthony Centura, Chief of Traffic and Transportation with us to hopefully talk about some of the traffic issues we're having in the city. I know he will. And so maybe we could talk through some things. So please come and be, be with us. Very happy to support the Crown Act. It's extremely important, particularly as we've seen stories in the past couple of years with particularly in this sport of wrestling, where African-American athletes were told they had to cut their hair, which is absolutely inhumane and atrocious. So I'm very, very happy to support that. Regarding twenty-four forty, I can't tell you how thrilled I am to finally see this come. And I'll tell you why. Yes, as you can tell, I am not a very good Spanish speaker yet, but I'm trying. I'm, I'm trying. That Duolingo, took Japanese in college, it was the eighties. That's what they told us to do. But when I served on zoning board for fourteen years, and Lencio Vasquez can validate this if anybody wants to ask him, I would often ask, because we had so many Spanish-speaking applicants come and they had to have a family member translate or someone else translate for them. And it was embarrassing as a city and the Northeastern Party of the United States that we did not have our own translator. And I always asked, why can't we hire our own translator? Oh, there's a state program, we can go to the state. Well, I would always ask the zoning officials, why can't we do this? Let's get the administration to do this. For some reason, it never happened, even as chair, before I became one council. It never happened. So I am extremely proud that we are doing this finally for in my heart, moving into the twenty-first century. And I want to thank my colleague, Councilwoman Gonzalez, for bringing this forth. I'm proud to serve on a city council with two Latinas. And that is indicative for everyone in this city. Whether you came here recently or you've been here a long time, you are welcome in Trenton and we will be hearing you. So the issue unfortunately at hand, it's come up tonight. Something not a lot of people do know about, but the issue of four twelve market. You know, some things happen when it's a tough job on City Council. It's even tougher when you live in a neighborhood where something like this is going to occur. And you always have to remember one thing, and I learned this on zoning board, you have to do your job first. You have to weigh the interest of all parties. You have to be fair to everyone. Now, I've seen different things online. I've heard, I've heard people say things that this council may have taken something, may have had, I don't know what that means. But I don't believe anyone in this council has ever been on the take for anything. I'm going to flatly say that right now. I think we have ethics. I think we have morals. And to my knowledge, not one person in the city government has ever told anybody they don't need an ordinance. That is not our job. That is the job of a zoning board. So anything that has to happen, has to have paperwork, has to go before the zoning board. Nothing is before this council. So our job is to not say anything that may influence a zoning board that has to make a decision, a legal decision that has to come about. So when I say that, we're going to do our jobs. There are people who want us to scream it to high heavens. That's not going to happen, I don't believe, because we're here to do our job, be professional and represent you. Now to some of the comments you may have heard about tonight. Yeah, I saw them, I heard them. They were hurtful. My wife, my children, myself, we've lived in Mill Hill for twenty-four years. If you saw where I grew up, I grew up in Wilbur section junior too. Yeah, even people like me grew up in Wilbur. If you see my six older siblings, they'll even tell you more so. I'm proud to say I'm from Wilbur. But brace, anything should not come between us and the city. We can't afford it. We have to love each other, lift each other up. But more importantly, the people in that neighborhood, they're not colonizers. They're not, they're not, they're people, a lot of them, they put their life savings into those houses. And we welcome everybody. We're probably one of the most diverse neighborhoods in the city. You name it, we got it. We have multiple languages. We have folks who, from LGBTQ community. We got multi-racial identities, people from foreign countries. It's important that we hold ourselves to a higher standard, hold ourselves together. And I know we will be able to work this out. And having been to the church where this sermon was- But let's come to a solution. I know we will. Returning citizens have a right to rebuild their lives. There is a process that must be followed. I think that process is going to come about and be followed going forward. And I know that Trenton will be able to see this. If it is approved, not approved, whatever happens with this project, sees things like this be a success because we need to have successes.
Council Vice President Figaro Kenberg.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everybody. It's so great to see so many familiar and beautiful faces in the audience tonight. For whatever reason you guys are here, it's, it's just great to see the participation. It's great to see you guys come forward. It's great to see you guys have your voices heard. Because, you know, it's not always the complaints and always the what can we do for you? It's also, you know, this is great. Thank you for implementing this, this for us and this is going to help us grow. So I'm really glad to see you all here this evening. I just want to start by saying that, you know, bullying, aggression, erratic behaviors while serving in a professional capacity is not something that should ever be tolerated. We should always be holding ourselves accountable and we should always be treating each other with respect, no matter, you know, what positions that we serve. And so when issues like what came to us before council that happened with HED was brought to our attention, we took it very seriously. Nobody deserves to be treated in such a way that there's a lack of integrity. Having said that, I want to personally thank Juan Rolan and family for all the hard work that you do in the community across all racial lines and boundaries and barriers. And you give back to the community in such a way where it is just, you have a light about you and everybody who works with you within your organization. And I'm really happy that there is funding on the table for your organization because I know that it is going to go to the greatest of good. So congratulations. the greatest of good. So congratulations. You know, catering to and providing dignity and respect to our returning citizens is something that we often overlook. We say it. We say, oh, yes, absolutely, that's important. But when it comes to giving that respect personally to individuals and saying, you know, whatever you did, you served your time, you have been rehabilitated, welcome back, welcome back into the community, let me take your hand, and let's move. That's not something that's often done. There's still the stigma. There's still the bias. There's still the smirks and the talking behind the back. And so when you want to say something, when you're going to say something with your chest, mean it. And thank you again, Empowerment House and all others who are looking at all individuals as human beings moving forward. That is something that, you know, we don't need to just talk about, we need to be about. Mental health awareness is something that's very important to me, and thank you to my colleagues, and particularly to Council President Feliciano, who is on the forefront of mental health awareness and bringing it, you know, bringing about counseling and therapy, and let's talk about it. And there's so many different facets of mental health. I myself have been dealing with mental health issues in my family with my mother and my sister, you know, for quite some time. And it doesn't only impact those who have the affiliation, but also those who are the caregivers, also those who are facing and dealing with them on a daily basis. So this awareness, these programs, this therapy, these things are very, very important. So constantly bringing back about this awareness is excellent. And again, thank you, Council President, for that. I am not aware of the remarks that were made over the weekend with regards to the transition housing, and I do want to get more information about that. Again, I do not invoke hate whatsoever, absolutely not. But I do want to get more information, and I do hope that we can come to some sort of some sort of, some sort of, something that works for everybody with regards to the community. And to your point, it's not about who's coming into the community, it's about the order and procedure of it, which is paramount. So thank you for bringing that to our attention as well. And it's something that we should definitely be looking into. The last meeting that I had with regards to the Trenton Animal Shelter, I'm very happy to say that a lot of dogs have been adopted out. We're moving animals. This is something that we need to, you know, keep doing, because it's not these animals' fault that they land in there, but we really just don't have the resources. With regards to the language ordinance, I'm very happy that this has come forward. This has been mandated by the state of New Jersey since January 2024. I'm glad that it's being recognized within a municipality. I'm looking forward to us finding the funding appropriate to make sure that these translations are done properly as they are needed. I've been a bilingual investigator for over 20 years of my career, and I'm the director now. And I know that, you know, speaking to families and speaking to individuals in jail who do not speak English, they feel lost, and they don't feel comfortable speaking to somebody who does not speak their language. And when I send my investigators out now throughout the state of New Jersey, and they don't speak the language, they have to rely on language line and other things that are just not as personable. So, you know, these things, just meeting people where they are and being able to validly communicate so that they understand exactly what's going on is extremely important. And I know that's my time. With that, I just want to say, please join Councilwoman, Council President Feliciano, and myself on Wednesday, May 15th, at ladder number two on South Broad Street, 714 to 720 South Broad Street, along with our fire director and hopefully our Trenton Police Department and Traffic to come and talk about safety and response within the community and parking too close to the curb for the fire trucks who are trying to maneuver around the city. So please join us again Wednesday from 6 to 8 on May 15th. Thank you guys so much. Have a wonderful evening.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight. It is a pleasure to see everybody. I wish that we could see you all the time. But I certainly understand that when there is a cause that is important to the people, you will come forth and you will speak on that. So you get much respect from me for coming forward on tonight. Let me just say this. I do want to echo the sentiments of what my colleagues have said about this issue in Mill Hill. I just, I didn't hear what happened firsthand for myself. I did get certain messages from people that said that there were racial things that were said, and it was very derogatory in what was presented. I in no way support anything like that. I don't care who said it. I don't care if they're a minister in the church or if there's somebody standing on the street. So let's be clear with that. I do not support anything like that coming from anybody's mouth. With respect to the transitional house that's coming, that's there in Mill Hill, I can say, I don't even think we really knew about that when it was happening until it happened. There was nothing that came before council that we had to even vote on. So that was a transaction that was done with the administration and with the buyer. So let's, let us put that out into the atmosphere so that we are clear with that as well. Our lines are drawn as what the council does, what the council does not do. And there's certain things that we can step into, and there's certain things that we cannot, right? So I just want everybody to understand that, you know, everybody's like, the council needs to do this, the council, we do have investigatory powers that we can look into certain things. So to that end, we can move in a certain direction, but if the administration has done the deal and certain things like that, unless it's something that has to come before us, sometimes we don't even know until it's done. So please don't blame us for what we don't know. It is Municipal Clerks Week, so we shout out our awesome clerk when Mr. Cruz is done talking to him. When Mr. Cruz is done talking to him, we just want to shout out Mr. Garcia for Municipal Clerks Week. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Cruz, for the awesome work that Mr. Garcia does. For those that don't know, Oprah was an issue in our city, right? People complaining about getting records and documents. And as we look a little bit further into it, it was not only the clerks issue, it was actually departments within the administration. Everybody now is working on one accord to move a little bit faster, to get things done better, so that way you're getting what you need. But Brandon, to his credit, actually had an internal training that was done here for the directors that were here. And then he had external, where he brought in people from the state that actually came and gave such a wonderful training that when he went for his recertification classes, they actually shouted him out at the event for having such a wonderful event. So, Mr. Garcia, we say thank you. Congratulations on the phenomenal work that you do. We appreciate you and look forward to you continuing on moving us forward. Thank you to my colleagues. For those that could.
Thank you all, by the way.
You're welcome. Thank you to my colleagues, those that could, and to the administration, and Mr. Terese for putting your green on as I requested for Mental Health Awareness Month. We just wanted to show support. We did have a resolution that we passed at the last meeting that said that May is Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Trenton. And it's very important that we recognize that as well. So thank you, everybody that could, that did. You are appreciated. When it comes to the translation ordinance to the documents 2440, shout out to Councilwoman Gonzalez for putting that forward. I believe that it is important. I will ask questions, however, about the funding and certain things, right? I am looking forward to it happening. I even have a suggestion that I think you'll probably like when I show it to you, that could help us out in helping to advance this. I teach the kids in the high school, right? And so a lot of them are Latino. My daughter is Latina by way of her father, so let us be clear with that. I am Black 100%. My last name is Feliciano, because I was married to a man who was Spanish, right? And that is his descent. I love the people, toda la gente, right? But I know who I am, and I support everybody. So there is a process to things with anything that we would like to do. There is a process. I would just like to make sure that as we move forward and venture into this, that this is something that we can do that will be sustainable, that it is actually possible, that we can actually branch it out if we have to in other areas. I don't, I want it to be something that is actually enforceable. We don't want to do something that we end up turning on ourselves, and we can't do anything, and we don't have the resources to make it happen. So I am for it. I support it. I think that it'll be good. And when I took my multicultural training, oh, I'm going. We actually, to Jackie's point, watched a video where they showed the child who was a Spanish-speaking child. And the child was sitting in the room and was listening to all of the people speaking English around him. And it sounded like, if you remember Charlie Brown, and the teacher was talking, it was like wah, 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 wah. And so it brought us to the mindset of looking and listening and thinking how lonely that child must have felt in that space, trying to figure out, what are these people saying? I want to be here. How do I fit in? So I understand 110% about what this ordinance will do, what it means, and look forward to moving it forward in a way that will be beneficial to us all. Again, thank you all for coming out tonight. I appreciate you and your time, Mr. Garcia.
All right, Madam President. Here we go. This brings us to the remainder of the docket, Communications, Petitions, and Reports. You'll vote on Thursday. We are now at ordinances for second reading and public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. Madam President, Mr. Cruz would like to address the council momentarily, if that's all right with you.
Good evening, Madam President and Council. There was a statement that was made that this council was not aware of what was happening at the Mill Hill with the boarding house or the transitional house. And yes, you are correct. However, administration had no knowledge as well, because a statement was made that the administration has something to do with the church, and that is not factual. In fact, this council got the notification from the church before we did. So if it wasn't because you sent it to us, we never would have known what the intent of this church was. So yes, so just want to clear the record that this administration also had nothing to do with it or had had any conversation with the church until it popped up on your radar. Yes, thank you.
Thank you for that. And so to that point, when I did receive the email from an outside party that was affiliated with the church about redevelopment, I didn't read through to see what they were talking about. I saw a pilot for an area. I took it and forwarded it to the administration, because, Council, we don't touch redevelopment, right? So I forwarded it and said, here's this, you all need to handle this. And that's where it was. I didn't know if it was a transitional house, a regular house, a row house, a outhouse. I forwarded the email as it was when they asked for whatever they were looking for with the pilot. Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Certainly. Madam President, moving on to the rest of the docket, we are at ordinances for second reading and public hearing. If you'd like me to read those each.
Yes.
Ordinance 24-14, ordinance of the city of Trenton amending Chapter 10, alcoholic beverages, Section 10.5, restrictions of the code, city of Trenton, to permit a waiver of distance restrictions under certain circumstances. Ordinance 24-18, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property, commonly known as Baker Alley, and identified on the city tax map. What, the hearing, I believe, is Thursday, right, when we vote, on voting there? Yes, okay. Thank you. We're at 24-18, correct?
Yes.
Ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property, commonly known as Baker Alley, identified on the city tax map, block 23803, Lot 19, pursuant to NJSA 48, 48,12, 13B5, to El Catedor Bar and Grill for the sale price of $1,000. Ordinance 24-26, ordinance to revise certain positions fixing salary ranges therefore and setting certain regulations for the implementation of same construction official. Ordinance 24-28, ordinance to amend Chapter 222 of the Code of the City of Trenton, rent control to fix rental increase at 4%. Ordinance 24-029.
Point of order, Mr. Garcia.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. That title should have been changed.
That is which now?
We amended the title.
We amended the title 28?
Yeah, oh, 28, for regular tenants and 2% for a senior citizen or disabled tenant. That was supposed to be amended.
We'll check the title. I believe the title itself has been changed. I know I did receive instructions to swap. I apologize for not updating the docket with the new addition to the title. We will update in a second. Thanks for pointing that out.
Sorry.
Counselor.
We take it back.
Moving on, ordinance 24-29, ordinance of the city of Trenton to adopt NJDEP's model ordinance regarding illicit connections to the municipal separate, to the municipal separate storm sewer system, and to amend Chapter 254 of the Code of the City of Trenton. Ordinance 24-30, ordinance of the city of Trenton to adopt NJDEP's model ordinance regarding littering and to amend Chapter 150 of the Code of the City of Trenton. Ordinance 24-31, ordinance of the city of Trenton to adopt NJDEP's model ordinance regarding pet waste and to amend Chapter 21 of the Code of the City of Trenton. Ordinance 24-32, ordinance of the city of Trenton to adopt NJDEP's model ordinance regarding feeding of wildlife and to amend Chapter 21 of the Code of the City of Trenton. Ordinance 24-33, ordinance of the city of Trenton to adopt NJDEP's model ordinance regarding privately owned refuse containers and dumpsters, to amend Chapter 254 of the Code of the City of Trenton. Ordinance 24-34, ordinance of the city of Trenton to adopt NJDEP's model ordinance regarding yard waste and to amend Chapter 312 and 248 of the Code of the City of Trenton. Ordinance 24-35, an ordinance of the city of Trenton to adopt NJDEP's model ordinance regarding spilling, dumping, or disposal of materials other than stormwater, and to amend Chapter 254 of the Code of the City of Trenton. Ordinance 24-36, an ordinance of the city of Trenton to adopt NJDEP's model ordinance regarding privately owned salt storage, and to amend Chapter 254 of the Code of the City of Trenton. Ordinance 24-37, ordinance of the city of Trenton to adopt NJDEP's model ordinance regarding retrofitting of storm drain inlets and to amend Chapter 254 of the Code of the City of Trenton. Ordinance 24-38, an ordinance of the city of Trenton to adopt NJDEP's model ordinance regarding tree removal and replacement, to amend Chapter 287 of the Code of the City of Trenton. Moving on to resolutions, Madam President, is there, are there any items that you or the council would like to extract from a consent agenda this time?
Thank you. Are there any council members that have any items that you want us to pull to the side for discussion?
Council President?
Yes.
Actually, I have just a simple question, not to be pulled. I wanted to stay on one of the items, and that would be 24-175. Just have a simple question on it, but I do have a question.
Okay. 24-175. Okay. Anyone else?
Council President, I don't want to remove it from the docket, but I do have just one quick question also on the developers. 170, 24-172.
Anyone else?
Council President, I have 24-187, 24-039.
I meant 24-187.
24-039. And then, as you called it out yourself, 24-40. Thank you.
Wait a minute. You said 24-187 and 24-039?
Yeah, 039.
Okay, so that's an ordinance.
Yeah. Oh, shit, did they come on there, and I'm sorry. Missed that. My bad. Well, I do have a question on it, so.
Okay. Anyone else?
Was there anything else? Oh, I thought I heard another one.
Just 24-187 is the only resolution. Anyone else? All right.
With that being the case, I apologize. Moving on to ordinances for first reading and introduction. Or, Madam President, would you like the question?
I want to, we're going to run through the questions.
Certainly.
So we'll start with 24-172.
Like I said, this is a quick, this is just a Like I said, this is a quick, this is just across the board. I just wanted to say, do we have a timeframe? And I think we asked this question before. This may have been before our new director, but do we have a timeframe for the redevelopers to complete the project?
I believe he's on. Good evening, Masial Medina-Ferrara, Director of HED. We usually, for this particular resolution, for this particular project, I think what we had put in the resolution, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I can give you some details. I believe it's a two-year period. We definitely allow the city that if we do not see progress proceeding, that we allow the city to then crawl back the agreement. If we don't see any progress, we can also have the opportunity to extend the agreement if there is a delay, whether it may be permitting or other issues that come up, and then the developer comes to the city and produces that material for our consideration.
Just one quick follow-up. So is that across the board for everybody, two-year? Okay.
That's part of the, what all these development agreements that you see before you today follow the same process. We have an application process, we have a review process that engages the HED staff plus the administration, and which we, you know, we don't make any exceptions. If the developer cannot show results, then we start to investigate and then possibly terminate the agreement if necessary.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Excuse me, Director. In our conversations too, we discussed you looking back at projects that have been done to actually see where we are, those that have been laying stagnant, because there have been things that we have already passed and approved for development to begin on, that nothing has been done. So you are going to look back as well to write, to see and have a taken accounting of that, so we can figure that out as well.
Yes. I may have mentioned in previous meetings that not only are we looking at the individual agreements, we're also looking at redevelopment plans, where some of the provisions may have been, you know, sunset and no longer are in effect, and then we're going to reevaluate those as well.
Okay. Thank you. One second. Councilwoman Williams, have a question for her?
Go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am. So I have a quick question. As often happens, particularly with zoning, when people get properties, they start running out of time, getting them off the ground, going to lose their financing, have to try to get approval to extend their financing. So I'm very much in support of having a sunset on, for two years of these projects, but how do you see that affecting anyone with a financing issue? And can they appeal it to your department to get an extension if it's a legitimate financing issue that they're going to run out?
I will work with the administration. Right now, to my knowledge, we have nothing set in place. I think that's a great suggestion, that we have something set in place, so that all the developers understand this would be the process that's being evaluated. You know, we may have to deal with the current projects that have been already assigned to a redeveloper, and then go from there. But going forward, I would like to have things a little bit more streamlined, where the developer understands that this is an agreement that you're entering, we are going to evaluate your progress over a certain time period, and you have to demonstrate that you are making progress on this agreement, otherwise than that, the city has its, within its right to terminate the agreement and put the property or the project back for other individuals to bid on it, to be selected as a redeveloper.
That would be great, because even quite often, every few years, you'd see the same developer of the same property come back to use the same sob story.
Yes.
So, thank you.
We're trying to eliminate that. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to leave it on for consent, right, Councilwoman?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. 24-175.
Thank you, Council President. So Director Semple, it's a real simple question. This is for armed security at the Water Works. Have we previously had armed? I know we had security, but was it always armed at the filtration?
Yes, over the last four years, we've always had armed security guards.
We have?
Yes.
Okay, and is this for just one person, or is this for several?
No, it's 24/7.
It is 24/7?
Yes.
Okay, that's all?
Okay.
Thank you.
I think it's mine, too.
It's to stay on, Madam President.
Thank you.
Madam President, I just want to add to the comment that the Director made.
Thank you.
The filtration plant is considered a hard, high-targeted area, and so the Department of Homeland Security highly recommends that we have individuals that can deal with an escalated event. So that is why we have armed security at the filtration plant.
Thank you, Director Cruz. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz. All right. You're good with it. Stay on. Thank you. It'll stay on. All right. It stays on consent. Thank you. Thank you, Director. 24-187. Oh, yeah, shoot again.
Thank you, Council President. So my question is, Mr. Semple, so regarding this resolution, and I know it's not a large amount of money, but it is for us, do we have any better idea once this passes? Will we have more of an exact number of properties that we know we will be able to complete with the program in the next year?
So this is the Phase Four lead line, clearing phase of it. So right now, we're currently working on inventory, building inventory, and we will come to you with that number when we're ready to do the construction part of it.
Okay. So at this point, with this resolution, that won't help us get closer to a final number yet, it sounds like?
No, this is estimated. We still do an estimate.
It's estimated, okay. I'm trying to nail you down. It's okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Council President.
Before we close, Councilwoman Gonzalez did have a question of 24-176. Director Semple.
No, that's Director, oh, wait.
24-176?
I'm sorry, 24-174 is for Director Richardson.
Okay, 24-174. Sorry about that.
It's to still be on consent. I just want a quick question. Good evening, Director.
Good evening.
I see the money, I see the funding. I had a couple of people ask me, and I want to just, so that you can say it for the public, can this be used, so if a homeowner has a house, and let's say their siding is damaged, can they apply for the funding to help fix the outside of their house or exterior parts?
Only if it's deemed an emergency.
Only if it's an emergency? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I was just, that was it, really?
Okay. So only for emergency? We have actually the emergency program, but it's, one of our contractors need to deem it an image, I'm sorry, one of our inspectors needs to deem it an emergency in order for us to.
Okay. Because on eight, it says rehab of existing buildings to increase the number of affordable housing. And I know someone just kept saying like, they can't afford to do certain things, so they didn't know if there was funding available, so I didn't know if it would fall under here.
Yeah, that is actually for the home part of it, but that applies to bigger projects, not to a specific residence, but it will have to be, for example, for every developer.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
All right. That's it. Everything consent.
All right, Madam President, with everything remaining on the consent agenda, we'll move to ordinances for first, move to ordinances for first reading and introduction. Ordinance 24-39, ordinance prohibiting the damaging, defacing, or removal of street signs within the City of Trenton, Chapter 54, Article 5.
Councilwoman Williams had a question about that?
Yes, I do, ma'am. So my question is, and I know from reading it, it's essentially going to go to state code on what the penalty would be, but I don't know if maybe Mr. Kologji can enlighten us, or enlighten me at least, on roughly what the fine would be for that?
Sure, thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, what it does is it references the general penalty provision of the Trenton Code. So when no specific penalty is provided in an ordinance, it references the general penalty provision, which leaves it up to the discretion of the judge. He can go up to a $2,000 fine, he can do, you know, certain other things if restitution is involved, et cetera. In this one, I believe we put restitution, yeah, in paragraph four, we indicated that the city can pursue civil remedies against individuals or entities responsible for damage or seek restitution in the municipal court. So we left it up to the judge's good discretion on how to get our, how to find the people and how to also recover any cost from the damage.
May I ask, other municipalities, do they usually handle this similarly, or do they have a solid number for what the fine would be?
Well, you know, I mean, it's a judgment call, certainly. You can, every ordinance, you can create a fine structure, but it kind of defeats the purpose of giving the judge, you know, a judge who has the wisdom and looks at the facts of every case to apply an appropriate penalty. A lot of times, it's negotiated with the prosecutor, too, so, you know, I certainly don't see any downside to leaving it like this.
Okay. All right, thank you. Because it's a severe problem in our city. I know in the North Ward it is.
You're welcome.
All right. With that being done, Madam President, as I just informed you, I was going to like to address a walk-on resolution that will be Resolution 24-188. And that resolution is approving an agreement with the City of Princeton, New Jersey, to purchase, Princeton, New Jersey, for the purchase of a used 2001 KME mid-mout fire apparatus for the Department of Fire and Emergency Services, in the amount not to exceed $80,000. If the council would allow that on the consent agenda, unless there are any questions at this time. Hearing none, may I interpret, Madam President? May I interpret that?
They didn't have time to adequately look at it, I don't.
Okay.
So just give us a minute.
Understood.
So if we could have Director Douglas, I guess, or Mr. Cruz, somebody come up and tell us why we're doing this, to give us context?
Good evening, Council, Kenneth Douglas, Director of Fire and Emergency Services. Council President, we are in need of buying this apparatus. Currently, we have two ladders in the city working daily operations, when we should have three. We have two ladders that actually severely damaged beyond their repair, and another one actually repaired right now, but it's going to take a while. It's really a big financial cost. We have no reserve ladders in the city at all. So with that being said, with Mr. Cruz and the mayor also, the City of Princeton, actually before they put this ladder up for auction, it was discovered by the administration that they were having it for sale. So long story short, discussed it with the administration. Mr. Cruz found some funding and some capital money, and we made an offer, and they didn't put it up. Of course, we gave a letter of our intent to purchase, and actually, we agreed to sell it to us for $80,000. It's definitely needed. The use of this ladder for the City of Princeton far is way below what we use it in the City of Trenton, because they don't have as many fires or runs that we have. So this actually can be a frontline apparatus for our town opposed to Princeton, probably use maybe about a quarter of the time. Although we have a ladder right now that's a 2,000, probably far exceeds the usage that this Princeton ladder was now. The way they use it, it could be a frontline apparatus in the City of Trenton, but it's definitely needed.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Any council members object to this going on consent agenda?
None.
Thank you. All right, it can go on consent. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Moving back to ordinances for first reading and introduction, we, I believe we are at 24-40, an ordinance requiring the City of Trenton to disseminate certain information and documentation in both English and Spanish language.
I have a few questions.
Certainly.
Thank you. Okay. So when it comes to this ordinance, what exactly is the plan for the rollout to make this happen? If the originator of the ordinance can speak to it, or somebody can speak to it, what is the plan?
I was going to say, I was going to say it.
Council President, if I may, I don't know if the presenter would like to discuss it first.
So as far as the rollout, I don't think there's an exact set plan. However, we just said that we wanted it to be within 18 months, given it enough time for us to find who is, are we going to provide, hire, put RFP out for an actual translation company? Also, it would just be specific documents that would be translated, so it won't be every single letter that comes out of City Hall, but however, like tax sales, violations, fines, things that are listed here. And of course, we're open to suggestions as far as what else would be transpiring. Some of our departments are already doing this. It's not just official, but some directors have taken it upon themselves to translate some of the documents. It's just not across the board. So I think the rollout would just kind of be making sure that the first, the things that are listed, as far as, as far as the money that is coming into the city, those would be the first things that we translate in Spanish. But I don't know of an exact plan. I know we said we would give it about 18 months, so that we can gradually implement the translation process, as far as the conversations that I've had.
Okay. And so then you'll have discussions on whether or not there'll be a translator or an interpreter that would be doing this?
Possibly a company, hiring a company.
Okay.
If that is the, you know, wish that we all think is best. I did submit, I did send an email to every person on this dais, every council member, just for their ideas and suggestions on how we can possibly roll this out in funding. I didn't get a response from anyone, so I didn't know if anyone had any ideas in regards to it or not.
And so what's the cost, the total cost, that this would be?
So that's what we're kind of going back and forth, right, Mr. Cruz, on, on.
If I, if I could jump in, Council President, briefly, I think this really provides a good example of council and administration working collaboratively together. This is really why it's imperative when council is making these proposals that they speak with the administration, because we can have a great idea in terms of doing this, which it is a good idea and will be a requirement, but in order for us to effectuate this, we have to budget for it. We have to make sure we have the resource and the people to do it. Councilwoman Gonzalez, and I have had a conversation about this, and what the, what the plan will be within that timeframe that she referenced would be to issue some type of bid quote request for qualifications and proposals to get a translation service to be able to give us an idea of a cost for this. We should be able to effectuate that between the first and second reading, at which point in time, we will have a definitive dollar amount, A, and B, an identification of the specific documents that are going to be translated. I know there was a list of documents that were circulated with the email that were, you know, kind of intended to be translated, but I think just kind of following that process going forward, I don't, I don't see it being an issue with respect to, you know, perfection, perfect not only the contract, but the documents and the scope of the work that's going to be done. And then, quite frankly, the Council President's point, as part of that RFQ, RFP information, we can also get an idea as to what it will be to proliferate that translation to other languages and other documents. So I think it'll be a good first step in the process as to what we're going to have to do anyway, by state, by state regulation. So the short answer to your question is, it needs to be an outside agency. I'm not comfortable having someone internally who doesn't have a certification do that. I think it opens them up to criticism, and opens the city up to liability if something is wrong. And I don't necessarily see it to be a hot, being a heavy price tag, that it would be, you know, not, not, not something that we'd be able to do fairly simply. So to be determined, but I think we'll have an answer to that by the time we have a second reading for this.
Okay.
Thank you. And also, Council President, I did suggest, I know we already have, as a council, approved some translation companies, I know for the court system, so I did suggest that we can even reach out to those that we are already using for certain things, and then possibly just extend the contract out to provide more services for different departments.
Right. And Council President, while we have a great working relationship with council, this is again, an example of why it is imperative that when you're coming and placing these before your governing body for a vote, if it's something that's going to require budget, if it's something that's going to require, if it's something that the administration would put forward, we're always, obviously, fully supporting. we're always obviously fully supportive of this council, but it's imperative that we work in tandem to put these things forth in conjunction, not just unilaterally. So we know that there's a concrete plan going forward to make sure that it happens, but also there's funding available to make sure that it also happens. So again, this is another example of the administration and council working well together and tandem together. And just as point of clarification, we should continue to do that transparently and have that dialogue before we're bringing things onto the docket.
Right. To that point, right, so thank you for that, right? And that's why I was getting that, just having the conversations to flush all of this out. Because in my mind, before we go to move something into an ordinance type, an ordinance, which is something that we must do, and it would have to be enforced by someone, we should at least have an idea of what we're doing and the cost and all of that good thing. As a matter of fact, I do recall that during the one docket review back in March, when we discussed it, it was put out on the table that maybe a resolution of support of the state, the state bill that was done, right? It was, well, the Senate, actually, number 2459, and then Governor Murphy signed it in January 12, 2024, that if we were supporting it until you flushed all this out to figure out exactly what was going on. Because the bill, while it says that the state has to do this and calls for its, the government entities and departments and the executive branch, it also calls that they would have a language access plan that would reflect how the entity will comply with the provisions of the act. And they would issue the plan within 90 days of the effective day of it. So my question is, if we were to go ahead and do this, and I'm not against it, let me be clear. If we were to go ahead and do this, how would this be enforced? If you don't, I mean, if you're talking 18 months of making this happen, if it's not done within 18 months, who's enforcing it? And then what is the penalty if you don't?
I don't think we would penalize the city, but that's a good question.
Right, but I mean, of course, but like.
Because I know that we spoke about the term goal, having this as a goal for the city to reach in 18 months. But you're right, that's a great question as far as enforcing it. We're open to suggestions as to where, I think that that could have been spoken about. I didn't, this is the first I'm hearing about that suggestion, but I'm open to whatever we all come up with as a group.
Council President?
Yes.
So I would offer that maybe we take this back and review it as a body and work out the kinks. So this way that when we are ready to present it, it comes out and everybody knows exactly what's going on. We can all be on one accord. But I can't wait for my opportunity to vote yes on it. But I do think that we should probably just hash it out a little bit more. So this way, Councilwoman Gonzalez and all the rest of us are clear on exactly what we want to do, what needs to be done. So there's no question in the end for anyone.
I do have one more.
Council President?
Yes.
Thank you. So regarding this, I know, I remember when Councilwoman Gonzalez asked for estimates of what it would cost. Honestly, you know, there'd be no way to really base that, so that's why I didn't answer her. But, you know, the question is a great one for all of us, because we do need to find out what cities of similar size have done to do this. Because also, this is a model for what we need to do for Polish, Ukrainian, Creole, and so forth. We're not in New York City where they have translation to 35 languages, but we also don't have those demands here. And further, and I just take this idea from serving on the Patient Family Advisory Council at U Penn Princeton Hospital. One of the things we could look at, and I don't believe this would cost a lot of money, but we should look at is also putting a, at least an English-Spanish translator kiosk towards the front of City Hall. So then if someone's looking for something particular, whether it's traffic and transportation for a permit or animal license or anything else, they can easily speak into a microphone and have what they're saying translated into English per se. Google Translate, that's just an idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm sorry. If you look over here at the monitor, did some research, talked to the people of West New York, and I called today and spoke to the municipal clerk and everything over there. Because when we looked, I was like, hey, you all have this really cool website in how things could be translated. So what I want to show you is, it may not be the matter of us having all these forms printed and excess costs and everything, but if you click here, it's Spanish.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it goes and translates everything into Spanish on the website. And you can take it down, and it has the forms and everything that you can click on the applicable forms that you will be looking for. So what I would say is, as we flush this out, is that if we may even look from an IT perspective, that if we have a separate laptop or something in the areas, because the state law speaks to having I-speak cards. So when people come into an area, they pick a card, I-speak Spanish. So then they have it, they go up. We have a laptop or something set up with something like this, if it is financially possible for us to do. They can actually find the form that they want on there, and it can be programmed that it would have it translated for them. And then they could print it right there on site and get what they need in that moment. So that's what I wanted to offer as consideration for that. Because I have been looking into it since it was brought forward. Again, my thing is, when we're moving laws forward, I don't want to see anything fail if it's good.
Right.
I want us to be completely thorough with what it is we're doing, administration giving us the feedback when we're asking for it, and coming forward with reasonable answers and not a wish list. So I just wanted to throw that out there and show you, because I was excited and happy that I saw this. But it's just another way, and I have the man's information. Like I said, I contacted the gentleman who does this, and he's Cuban, small business from West New York. And he actually said that they tailor it for the people in the area. Because I asked him, I said, well, the dialects of Spanish are different. Are you going to be able to, would you translate it? Yes. So you can find this anywhere, I'm sure if we looked, it's as simple as this. So we don't even have to worry about paper and actual forms, maybe just things to say, did you know, or fact sheets. But when it comes to the actual printing of the work, then we may be able to just look and have it done right from the website and have it just set up in the areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. I also, other thing, that was a great idea, because that was one of the things that they, I've spoken to a couple of other municipalities, and they actually just translate the website. So that was a good point to bring up, thank you.
Yeah, just briefly, this is a very unique type of ordinance, because it spans a long period of time, a year and a half. We kept it sufficiently broad to not hamstring the administration as to the details, because quite frankly, at this point, we know we have to effectuate translation. We don't know exactly how that's going to be done, but we have a general concept. So we kept it, I think, broad enough where we give the administration a lot of latitude to work out something that you just talked about, or, you know, something along other lines. And we could always amend the ordinance if we have to down the road, if we need to get in details. I think the object here was to try to get this thing started, because it's such a, you know, a big undertaking, it's such a significant undertaking, to try to get it moving. And then we can always, as they say in golf, adjust on the back nine. Just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
On your call, Madam President, when you return.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know if there was anyone else.
Any other additional discussion regarding this ordinance?
So to that point, Councilwoman Frisbee suggested we pull it back until we flush it out and then reintroduce. Is there a motion for that? Where are we with this?
We want to.
This is my question.
I was going to ask, when you say pull it off, how long are you thinking pull it off or flush it out? Because honestly, this has been in, I know it came before docket review sometime at the end of February, early March. So, I mean, we could have had this dialogue a long time ago. So I'm just not saying I want to rush it, because I want it to be right, I want it to be effective, and I want to make sure that it properly, you know, serves our community. So I definitely want to make sure everything is worked out. So when you say pull it, how long are you saying to the next meeting?
So wait a minute, one second, I'm sorry. It came March 27. I sent out the initial questions at the docket review that it was at. Administration was supposed to get back with answers to questions that we had. That is why it wasn't on this docket as you thought it was going to be, because Mr. Garcia and I were waiting for answers from the administration that did not come. And so, I see you, Mr. Bridges, give me a minute. So we left it where we were having conversation, and they were supposed to get back. We were talking about funding, what are we doing? How are we proceeding? Because they were actually supposed to have conversations with you in between. Mr. Garcia didn't put it back on the docket because he didn't know that it was ready to go back on the docket, and we talked about all of that. So it was not that it was around for a long time or put to the side. There were just questions, when you said we could, there were conversations, you know, a long time ago. Granted, yes, we all could have had conversations and questions were asked, but we were just waiting for some of the answers. But we're here now.
Yes.
And we're looking to help to make this move. My concern is, again, that I don't personally think that the city should be, that we're just jumping into things without having a plan as to what this is going to look like or have the numbers as to what this is going to look like. No, I mean, you hear one minute, it's, well, we could just put, you know, a couple thousand dollars up towards it to get it started and figure the rest out. That, to me, is not a viable answer to here. I don't want the city to be stuck in a situation where we may start something because it sounds good, but then we can't finish it, and then we don't follow through on what we said that we were going to do.
Noted.
Council President?
I was going to say to you, how long you was going to go, but go ahead, Council.
Go ahead.
I was just thinking, should we do this as a resolution of support to adopt what the state did? And then it give us time to figure out all of the details of how to implement this, instead of doing it as an ordinance, and then we have an 18-month thing? So it's like, we're also in supportive of it definitely, and then that'll give us time to figure it out. That way it doesn't fail.
Right, right. So the suggestion is that this should be not an ordinance, but as we discussed, a resolution of support of the state, of the bill, to do that in the city, we start there. And then, once it's flushed out and you're ready to go, then you put it forward as the ordinance, because then everything will be mapped out, and then you're good. So we're going to support it, we're going to support that the city do it.
Right.
But until we know what's what, we can't make it a law until we know
Have all the things covered.
Right.
No, I understand, I understand completely what you're saying. I was just asking, she said to pull it, so I wanted to know how long she wanted us to pull the actual ordinance piece of it.
Council President, may I make a recommendation?
Yes.
With respect to this, why don't we pull this for the limited time to allow us to issue RFP, RFQ, get bids to find out what the cost would be based on what this council's will is? And I'm kind of enjoying this, because now I'm putting my council hat on. You guys are stepping in administration shoes and coming to us saying you want us to craft legislation and present legislation, which we agree with. However, in order for us to do so, we need to better understand what exactly you want. You asked, you said you didn't get, administration didn't get back to you with respect to questions you had about your proposed ordinance. We need to know what you want. So what I might, what my recommendation be is we put RFP, RFQ out to have a translation service, be it by internet, because actually, Mr. Cruz, we had a discussion about this earlier, and he said he utilizes a service like that in Perth Amboy. So we need to appreciate what type of translation services we want. Is it documents or is it internet? What languages we want to include in there? And then when we can include that all-encompassing, all-inclusive exhaustive list to put out in a bid, then when it comes back and we have the price tag for that, then we could put it back up for a vote for this body, be it by internet, be it by document. But respectfully, the administration can't answer half-hearted questions. We need to know what you want, exactly what you want, what languages, how you want to do it. We can't guess as to what you guys want. So let's identify the languages. Let's identify if we want it to be electronic by way of internet or documents. And then we will work with this council to craft an RFP, RFQ to get responses to find out how much this is going to cost. And once we get those responses back, then collectively, we can come together as a governing body and put it towards this council how you want to proceed.
I'm okay with that.
Madam President, I think that was pretty much what Councilwoman Gonzalez was probably seeking when she first put this out to us and just to know, because it's new for all of us. We know what we want, we know what the end result is. It's just the getting there, that pathway. So now that we're having this dialogue, because our hands are tied and we can't have these conversations with three or more of us at a time because of the sunshine law, this is good. So I think this is helpful, but this is what I believe Councilwoman Gonzalez, when she put it out there, does anyone have any suggestions? I think this is what she was looking for at that time, if I am not misspeaking. But that's what I would love to have us, for us to be able to get the administration up, because we need to know all the legal parameters so that we know that we are doing things in decency and in order. Thank you.
So with that in mind, Council President, if it's your will, I can have a resolution prepared by the next docket to support the state requirement for this translation and to put a bid out, RFP, RFQ out to get responses to see how much this would cost based on the omnibus of issues, languages, that we want to have translate and how we want to have it translated.
So to that, I will defer to Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I'm okay with that. And then we'll pull it, and so we, well, I'm okay with the suggestion.
Okay.
So that would be a motion.
Motion there.
That would be a motion to pull this ordinance until such time as the administration could get responses to the cost, be it RFQ, RFP, to have these translation services. But obviously, again, that's going to require a conversation with someone in administration, Councilwoman Gonzalez. And she could speak with her council members, you know, individually to get an understanding of the scope of the translation services that were needed, so we know exactly what to put forth in that bid.
Council President?
Yes.
Thank you. First, I just want to say thank you to Councilwoman Gonzalez for being amenable to changing it. And I think it's a great idea. My question for Mr. Bridges, and he may not be able to answer this right away, is how long it might take for the RFP process to start and then finish? Because my concern is, I don't believe it'll happen this time, but based on my zoning experiences, that this won't get carried through all the way.
We could do, we could do a quick, we could do a request for qualification, we could do a 10-day RFP. Again, I think the real, the first step's going to be understanding the scope of what we're looking for so we can include it in the scope of services that we're looking for. So as soon as we get an answer, and, you know, at least close to consensus from a conversation with Councilwoman Gonzalez and administration as to what we're looking for, it could be, we could have an answer in a couple of weeks. And quite frankly, depending upon the cost, we could do it as a 17.5 under a bidding threshold. But again, we need to know what we're dealing with before we could answer that question with any degree of certainty.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Council colleagues.
Okay, so we asking for the motion to pull this until?
A motion to pull until we have responses to our requests for bids or qualifications and the cost for this.
Okay.
Second.
The motion that was moved by, I'm sorry?
Me.
Got it. Moved by Presidents, got seconded by Councilwoman Frisbee, roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Now I'd like to make a motion that we have a resolution of support of the state legislature. of the um, of the state legislation regarding the translation of documents.
So moved.
Second, Frisbee.
Roll call Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettinburg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on, uh, on your call, Council President. Moving forward?
Yes, continue, thank you.
Certainly. To ordinance 24 dash 041, ordinance of the city of Trenton to adopt NJDEP's model ordinance regarding stormwater control and to amend chapter 254 of the code of the city of Trenton. And Madam President, there's no other questions regarding that ordinance? Or are there?
No.
Hearing none, then we can move to uh executive session at this time?
Yes. May I have a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Will we be uh?
I'm sorry?
We're not, we're not voting on anything about this tonight. We're just discussing and coming out. No.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
On that motion and second, a roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettinburg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano. Motion carried. We don't answer participated vote coming out of executive session. Thank you.
Attention, attention. Who's in there? All right. 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 Attention. Who's in there?